Yep, meeting in progress. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The time is seven P M. And we are officially calling the City of Inkster Planning Commission Meeting to order. Hmm, to order. Roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Wait a minute, I had to go to the restaurant.
I was about to say, you know what?
I had to do it. I had to do it. Okay, Chairman Steve Chisholm.
Here.
Commissioner Rebecca Daniels, present. Commissioner Cheryl Hayes Bradford.
Present.
Commissioner Tavon Hall.
Here.
Commissioner Matt Willis.
He is not joining us this evening.
Commissioner Tanya Willis.
Pres- what?
What did I say? Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Daryl Davis.
He might be late. They're working on the city infrastructure.
And Mayor Patrick Wimberly.
Won't be here. Won't be here.
You do have a corn, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Moving right along. We are down to item number two, adoption of the agenda. Has everybody had an opportunity to review tonight's agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Alrighty, the floor is open for a motion to adopt the agenda as is.
So move, support.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? Motion passes. Agenda is now adopted. We're down to item number three, adoption of minutes. Does it look like we have any minutes for from any last meetings? Are we all set?
Uh, we were unable, and I'll let the secretary uh explain further, but the minutes could not be completed from the last meeting because of uh technical issues, so.
No worries. Just wanted to make sure I wasn't overlooking anything. So we don't have any minutes to adopt this evening. Moving down to item number four. This is the first hearing of the public for items not scheduled for a public hearing, but on the agenda. If there's anybody in the general audience who wishes to speak to the unfinished business items or the new business items, please approach the podium and state your name for the record. And you are welcome to address this body.
Good evening, Sandra Wiley resident. Um, in reference to the auto car lot, I was just inquiring because I know the there was a moratorium on used car lots on Michigan Avenue, and I was wondering when that expired.
So we were actually trying to locate that um the language from the November eighteenth, two thousand nineteen city council meeting, item nine B, I'm sorry, uh, November fourth. One second. I was trying to quote it. Okay, November fourth, two thousand nineteen, thank you. Um, item nine B says consider, it was an action item under new business, consideration and approval for council to offer an end date for the existing moratorium on used car lots, and that's resolution number six dash eighteen dash one, two, three, R. Was unable to pull up the minutes for those because they're not necessarily on the website. I was trying to get a packet, but it's in twenty nineteen and it was keeps freezing for whatever reason because it's trying to download off the server. I did contact our city attorney just to get some information from him, but I was unable to reach him. So those are some matters we're going to be discussing tonight. We don't have an exact date on when that is supposed to end, but we were trying to confirm that.
Okay, and when was this uh particular um business? What are the dates on when it was put into you all's queue or whatever? Is there a date that this uh used car lot presented their paperwork to planning or whatever?
The planning department like to speak to that, please. And this is for two, six, three, zero, zero, Michigan Avenue, correct?
Yes. Steven, you're better at this than I am. Where is that about?
It's it's right across the street from the uh police department. If I'm not mistaken, right?
It's the chocolate shop. It's the chocolate shop.
Yes. So it's a car lot there already, so it's.
It's a car lot that sits there. It used to be the old gas, gas station, but the the actual proposal here is the is Corden's building.
Yeah, the chocolate.
Now.
Yes, give me one moment while my computer loads. I can give you the exact date of the application.
So Corden's closed?
Yeah, closed.
Closed in uh May, after, yeah, after Mother's Day.
They just did a hundred years.
Okay, because.
Right ahead.
I it I'm waiting when she gets that. Um, I'm I'm wondering, isn't Corden's a um historic location?
I don't know if they.
Because it's over a hundred years old, isn't it?
Yeah, I don't know if they had that status, though. I know what you're asking, but I don't know if they actually ever applied for that particular status to be.
Oh, wow. Extremely unique in its configuration and everything.
The uh application was dated June twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three.
June twenty seventh, okay. That's it, thank you.
No problem, thank you. There's anyone else from the general audience who wishes to speak to agenda items only at this time? Please feel free to approach the podium and state your name for the record. Alrighty, here and now, we're gonna move right along. We're down to item number five, public hearing. We have two cases, both special land uses. Flo- um, case number twenty-three da- item A, case number twenty-three dash zero-nine, special land use or S L U. Auto car lot at two, six, three, zero, zero, Michigan Avenue. The floor is open for a motion to open the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? Motion passes. Public hearing now open for case number two, three, dash, zero, nine. That is item five A under public hearings. Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, uh Chairman Chisholm. Uh, we were just discussing a little bit of the background of this uh proposal. Essentially, the Metro City Auto Group owns the lot next to uh where Corden's Chocolate used to be located. They purchased the uh previous chocolate shop, which is the twenty-six, three, zero, zero, Michigan Avenue location. And would like to utilize the existing uh thirty-three hundred square foot building with few modifications um and extend their existing lot into that lot, as well as tear down their building on that existing Metro City car um lot that exists now. Uh, we've reviewed this and you have elevations as well in your packet. They plan to put um some garage doors on the the rear of the building that is facing east and kind of using that chocolate glass building in the front as part of their showroom. Um, they've also kind of outlined how much parking they would be utilizing in that lot. But we believe that the circulation uh makes sense based off of the designs they provided. Um, we don't see there being any significant changes from the fact that there is the car lot right next door, so it seems like it is harmonious with the existing land uses. Um, harmonious with the master plan and the zoning ordinance. This is a um B three zone district. Uh, at the time of the review, I did not have any documentation that there was a moratorium on um used car lots or car lots on Michigan Avenue, and I didn't, I given that we still don't have any details on that, that will have to be taken into effect once we can uh contact the city attorney and get the details what that moratorium um if it's still an active moratorium or what that was pertaining to. So uh the review letter does not mention that because the planning department just did not have record of that at this time. Um, I know that the applicant is here this evening and can answer any questions that you may have. Um, I know I've I've spoken with them, so they obviously have a very good understanding of their project and can speak to anything that might not be detailed in the plans or the review.
Thank you. Um, would the applicant please approach the podium at this time?
I feel like it's my younger son.
Alright, good evening.
Good evening.
And just state your names for the record for me, please.
Ali Saad, advocate.
My name is Ali Decker. I'm an attorney. I'm helping them along. Uh, fourteen, two, seven, four, go to your room. Um, Ali and Eve are the twins that own the twins.
Okay.
They really are. So people wonder, although we once got a call from the Minnesota twins and they were all settled. Um, it all this is, is an extension of the use of the building Chocolate Factory is currently located. Um, the gentleman retired, and he really couldn't find any buyer that would continue his business. And um we bought the property uh under contract about a year and a half ago. And um we just, you know, waited for him to make the time and make the decision about when he's going to retire. As was mentioned by uh Ms. Dixon, there really isn't any uh additional excessive use. And it does meet the qualifications that uh part of the master plan, as well as um everything else that's there. Um, it's really just an expansion of the current lot, that the the current car lot that's there. And in fact, it's an enhancement because it tears down a pretty, you know, small building, and it makes it a much nicer showroom space. And um the building is going to be used for a showroom and it's going to be used for prepping the cars, no, no, no mechanical. Just cleaning and and prepping them. Um, the uh the company has had some very successful ventures. And it's a company that started about eight years ago.
Eleven years.
Eleven, shit, sorry. Time flies. Uh, eleven years ago, and um can't believe it's been eleven years. And they've they've grown asymmetrically, and they're they're very strategic in the development of their business, and I think this can add to their business development. And um they're great landlords and they're they're great, they're great occupants. Um, as you can, if you want to drive down to the Redford location or any other locations that they have, it's well maintained. And they take very good care of their properties. Um, this is an investment, uh the first investment in the city. Um, ironically, the initial one that we 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 thought about was um putting in a Starbucks. I mean, we walked in and they they recommended a Starbucks, and we pursued Starbucks for months. I kid you not.
Oh.
For months. I mean, it would, it was a great idea, to be honest with you. But Starbucks, the franchise, the company and franchises did not express an interest in it. Well, uh, we tried other locations. We tried other franchises. It didn't work. Um, it's just just because of the location, the close proximity to the other, the other franchises nearby. Um, so we 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 defaulted back to what they know best, and that is the auto dealerships. Um, it's our intention to make this uh a pride of of their 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 flag, of their of their operations and and we're excited about working with the city with uh with this project. You know, any questions you have, we're happy to answer. We were not aware of the moratorium. Um, and frankly, the logic of the moratorium may not even apply here. If it has a, because there's an existing property that is in fact currently used, and it's grandfathered again. All we're doing is that we're moving, um, we're demolishing one building and going adjacent building. The cars themselves are going to be parked pretty much on the existing property that is used as a car lot. There's um, there's very little parking of the vehicles uh to be sold on the new, on the chocolate uh location. So um, I'm pretty confident that um we 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 can move forward with any questions that you have.
Okay. Um, are you all on a, I'm sorry, I'm gonna let you guys go first. Uh, commissioners, do you have any questions or comments at this time for the applicants?
I do.
Commissioner Daniels.
So I just wanted to make um to to clarify that the the building that you will be demolishing is the office.
Current office in the lot.
Just like on the back.
It's like a small, like.
Red little building, yep.
Yes, like a three, four hundred square foot building.
So that's gonna be totally gone.
Yeah, that's gonna be gone.
Then you're gonna use the Cordo chocolates as that office along with a showroom?
It would be a showroom and a place to clean the cars.
And and customer parking too.
Customer parking.
So it's big enough to have a showroom?
We can put, yeah, we can put a couple of cars in.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
The cars they're gonna be putting in are like, you know, the, they they love Corvats. They love the, you know, the high, they're they're really for show. They're show cars.
Okay.
With anything else, because you know, it attracts people to wanna wa- to wanna see these cars. They got Bentley, for example, at the other location. And it's just something that gives the place the the aura of of uh fine vehicles that they sell.
Well, we'd be able to see there from the outside, and you won't see it until you actually come inside, the the cars that you're gonna show off.
So how it's set up, it's gonna be the same way. Um, it's all glass in the front, so if you're driving by, you're gonna see a nice car in the showroom.
You're not doing anything to the outside of the building. It's gonna be exactly like it is. It's just gonna change the names or whatever.
I mean, Ali, you wanna answer that?
The only thing they're doing is they're adding two doors in the back, but everything else is gonna remain the same.
Right.
The 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 look of the, the look of the building is beautiful, and they didn't really want to change it because it's iconic, as mentioned earlier. And that's an advantage to the dealership, not a disadvantage. Embracing iconic looks is something that I think people ought to do. And so the in terms of how it's gonna look, it's gonna look very much the same.
It's gonna look like a dealership, I mean.
But it's gonna, in terms of the the glass that's there, it's all gonna be the same. The only thing they're doing is that they're adding a couple of doors in the back. But really, the front facade is gonna be equal, equivalent.
It's actually from the the side, right?
The side?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Well, the front.
The front side.
Yeah, where the customer parking is, there's gonna be two ways, yeah. Too big over there.
But he's talking about the 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 way it looks from this, from the street. It's gonna look the same in terms of the, yeah.
You can, um, on page eight of the review, I clipped a picture of the elevation they provided. You can see where those doors would be installed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Move on.
So you're doing just used cars or new and used cars?
Um, mostly used cars. Once in a while, you have a new car.
Late model vehicles. They're they're all gonna be like late model vehicles within five years old.
Okay.
They they don't, they don't deal with cars that are older cars. They deal mostly with um cars that they buy from the cars people turn in.
At least turn-ins.
And they buy out leases.
But it it's not gonna be, you, they don't have clunkers on it. Clunkers and that stuff, those kinds of cars don't.
You said you had a couple of other locations?
We do, on Grand River Avenue.
Grand River?
Yes.
Grand River.
West of Tullabah.
Yes, yeah.
What is the name of this?
Twins Auto Sales.
Twins Auto.
Actually, I have more than two locations.
We have four in Grand River.
Yeah, we have four locations in Grand River, Detroit, and Redford, and you have other locations as well.
Mm-hmm. We have about a dozen other uh dealerships that we uh we lease out to.
Okay.
This will be number, this will be number thirteen.
So what you're doing over there on Michigan, that what you would do there is what's being done in these other places or is something um on a different quality?
It's 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 the same quality. What we do is we rent it, we, it depends on what happens. They're still thinking about whether the company's gonna run it or they're gonna bring in an affiliate that would run it, you know, essentially coordinate the buying of the vehicles and the financing and things like that. All these things take a lot of time to set up, and oftentimes, they make it easier for the affiliate to come in because they've got a lot of brothers and family members, and they're running out of family members to operate, so they gotta, they gotta bring in, they gotta bring in people to help.
Could you make sure you're speaking into the mic for me, please?
I'm sorry, yeah.
No problem.
I I was just saying that, you know, the, how many brothers you have? Five. You got five brothers, and they're all pretty much operating the dealerships and and a hardware store.
Okay, very good.
Cool, uh, we're, I was saying, okay. Commissioner Hall or Commissioner Williams, any questions? No, I just see our posters everywhere, so.
Okay. If you have any uh car, let me know. I'll take care of it.
Before we turn it over to the general public, because this is a public hearing, um, couple of questions. Do, are you on a timeline right now regarding the expansion?
We are, yeah. We we'd we'd like to start on it as soon as possible.
Okay. And then as far as the showroom, how many uh square feet is that? As far as size, it's all.
Thirty, Ali, is it thirty-five? Twenty-five hundred square feet.
Twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, I'm not gonna lie to you. I haven't seen the plans. I know generally what's happening, so I have to rely on others, too.
Mm-hmm.
And Ms. Dixon knows that, so her and I are smiling.
It's understandable.
Getting ready to take some out.
Oh, he's gonna really come out, okay.
Yeah, but we got some here, too.
I mean, the idea is to get to put a couple of cars in there, show cars, and then you put a few, a couple of desks in there for the salespeople. And then the rest are workers that uh employees that help facilitate the cars, cleaning them, when they're getting ready to sell. Just things like that. They'll put about five, six employees or about six employees, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I thought. See, I.
Yeah, the whole building is thirty-three, fifty-six. The front portion, I was just pulling up the dimensions of that front, like octagon, is about twenty-nine feet by thirty feet round, you know, you could kind of consider it round. And then there would be a a back room right behind that that's about twenty-four feet by twenty-nine feet. And then there would be where those bay doors are, which would also be showroom, is about forty feet by twenty-four feet.
If I, if I can just really quickly demonstrate. Here. You can see that this is the current existing car lot. This is where the cars for sales are going to be parked. And this building is no longer needed, so it's gonna get demolished. Plus, in all honesty, it's not a nice building. Okay, and it's just something that we can gear it up. Here, you'll have customer parking. So technically speaking, all of the car dealerships, cars are parked on what is currently is a car dealership. The other part is just really the service part of it and the parking for customers. And it's it's not really much of a change or increase in the use per se, because again, all of this is office use and all of it is just facilitated. And that's what, that's what's nice about this project is that, you know, it 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 utilizes the current strengths of the property, and what is that? The current strength of the property is the building, the iconic building, the beautiful building that's there. And it happens to allow further customer parking on that side of the building. So really, the crux of the use of the building is essentially the same, except inside of chocolate, they'll be managing a car lot in it.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, anything else, commissioners, before we turn it over to the general public? No. Alright, again, this is a public hearing, so the public has an opportunity to come up to the podium and ask any questions or give any comments that you may have regarding this agenda item. Yeah, sure. Uh, two, six, three hundred, Michigan Avenue? On the right agenda. Yes, I said two, six, three hundred, Michigan Avenue Auto Car Lot, special land use. And I don't see anyone from the general public.
Um, the special land use is for what purpose? What, I mean, I understand you want one, but why is it necessary? What is prohibited there that requires a special land use?
The planning department, speak to that, please.
Uh, all auto sales are special land use in the City of Inkster and uh special land use in the B three district, which is where this property is located. So they want to do used oz- auto sales, which is what the special land is.
Okay, and what was the purpose behind making it a special land use? Was there some reason it was necessary to do this? To um make it, make this so? I mean, what was wrong with the property? You're just saying all of them are special land use. Well, why are all of them special land use?
I was not here when the zoning ordinance was amended for the, to create the special land.
I wasn't here for the Spanish-American War, but I read up on it.
Ms. Wiley.
What?
Our special land uses for the City of Inkster.
I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just having a problem with all of these things being passed and no one ever knowing anything about it were able to explain it to your satisfaction.
No, I got you. The special land uses, though, were put in place before our even getting on the city council. And of course, as you know, the special land use comes to planning commission and then city council. Without it, city council or wouldn't have a vote on it.
Yeah, but here's the problem with all of that, and I think you.
Okay, hold on one second.
And I think you know it, too, is that when something is recommended, then certain people think they have to abide by it. They don't go through those reasons, so I'm just saying.
I get what you're saying. Once we recommend it from ci- from planning to city council.
Then they think it's okay. They don't have to go any further because all of the research and all of the documentation and all of the other things have been done, and I'm finding out that that's not the case.
Got you.
So.
Hold on one, hold on one second. Ms. Dixon?
Yeah, if I may, um, while I don't know the particulars of why the city decided specifically used car sales should be a special land use, spec- the idea behind all special land use is that it is sensitive use in some manner. So I know at points there was a large saturation of used car sales that that could have been a component of why this special land use was introduced. But there are communities that just say, well, we want to have a second look at this before this becomes instantiated as a business, which is why you have a special land use. That I'm just speaking from a perspective of why you have special land use is so that you can go through this extra step of review for each individual business that comes to establish itself in the city.
Thank you.
Okay, and once you all approve this, there won't be any type of maintenance being done at this location, will there?
I was gonna ask that question.
As far as car repairs?
Yes. Any type of maintenance on the vehicles at all?
Nope.
Strictly? So there's a, there's a car wash nearby or something like that?
There's a car wash right next door here.
Oh, and that's what you use you on that, too? Oh, but that's what you'll be utilizing to detail your vehicle?
The washing, the detailing occurs, you know, is why it be done. The exterior wash would occur.
Okay, so there'll be no, I'm sorry.
Well, you gotta step to the mic.
We're not, we're not, oh, my ankle hurts. Whenever I sit down, my ankle hurts. Um, this is not a request to convert the property into automobile repair facility. It's it's just an auto dealership, and as part of it, you're talking about cleaning the car. Car comes in, you vacuum it, you take it next door.
You can leave the, your preference, you know, I'm just under, trying to understand what Inkster will be letting themselves in for. Because there was a time, like you said, there was an enormous saturation of used car lots on Michigan Avenue. And at some point, the city felt that they needed to slow down that, or else we would be nothing but used car dealerships on the primary uh road. And we should have, it was all the way down, bumfuck, you know, so.
Goes to Wisconsin.
We're gonna make.
Wisconsin. I've been there.
Bumfuck is okay. Uh, anyway.
I don't think the people of Wisconsin would appreciate calling their town.
I didn't. Did I ask you?
Sorry.
Alright, guys.
Alright, 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 alright.
Guys.
But anyway. Um, I've lost my train of thought. Okay, I just think it's very sad that we're losing something to um that was such a I guess, and then that's what we're here for, to say how we feel about the situation, not this is it. I'm not going into the technicalities with you all. I'm just saying that it's, it was a landmark, so to speak.
Right, that location.
And I think that's sad. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, just to the commissioner.
Go right ahead.
Uh, I highlighted in the review, but I didn't verbally express that a condition of the land use is that there is no maintenance to the vehicles, so no repair, no mechanical maintenance beyond simple vacuuming, cleaning the windows till they shine, um, is allowed. So that would be prohibited, and if I don't believe they have any intent of doing so, they've expressed no intent to do so. But even if this were to change hands in the future and they were to start to maintain cars, their code enforcement would then step in and.
There's there's not a facility.
Right.
The facility is not there. Do you have any problem?
Understandable. It's just a discussion to ensure, um, lot, uh, because a lot of times what happens is and and you know, just from being in front of different municipalities, uh, we have applicants that come before us, they say one thing, and then we start getting calls when they do something else. And
You're right.
That's all. So it, the discussion just has to be had.
It's a good thing to put on the record.
Right.
And that's what we've done. We represent to you other records that there will not be any maintenance of of
Any vehicles.
Other vehicles, other than cleaning.
Okay, thank you. Alright, anything else from planning?
That is all.
Anything else from this body?
No, sir.
Alright, hearing none, the mo- uh, floor is open for a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Support.
It's been properly moved and so, and seconded. Is there is there anything additional? I'm sorry, any uh discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Motion passes. Public hearing is now closed. Now we are going down to item five B. Case number two, three, dash, one, one, special land use auto repair shop at one, four, seven, five, Middlebelt Road. The floor is open for a motion to open the public hearing for case number two, three, dash, one, one.
Thank you.
So move.
Is there support?
Support.
It's been property moved, I'm sorry, is there a second? It's been property moved and seconded. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? Motion passes. Public hearing now open. Ms. Dixon, you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, this site plan and special land use is for the Valero um gas station right there on the corner of Rosewood and Middlebelt. This is, the idea is to convert the existing uh twenty-two hundred square foot self-serve car wash, add an additional nine hundred square feet and create um six bay doors. add an additional nine hundred square feet and create um, six bay doors with tool in the rear for facing Middle Belt to do uh, auto repair at the gas station. This is zone B-three, uh, the rest of the parcels along Middle Belt are zone B-two. This is a um, I guess outlier, I'm not, I can't, again, I'm sorry, I can't speak to why that is. But this is relating to it being a B-three parcel. Um, just, so just something to keep in mind. This does abut the residential neighborhood um, off of Rosewood and Parkwood. There is an existing um, masonry wall that that would be required to make sure there's enough screening between the gas station and the residential uses there. And that is the same requirement that auto repair shops experience, so they have met that. Which helps, you know, in terms of the idea that this is adequately um, shielded to be harmonious with the surrounding area. But I do want to bring that up so that you're aware of it. Um, I know another standard is the smoke, fume, noise, um, odor pollution. You know, we're aware that the impact of an auto repair shop could create traffic and noise potentially. Um, vibration or things of that nature. But if the applicant provides hours of operation and noise control plan, potentially this could be met. Though, should be no reduction of economic viability. I don't believe the uh, car wash, self-serve car wash is currently being used. So this is, you know, just kind of standing there, underutilized right now. Um, and then we don't have any, any comments currently that there would be excessive additional cost to public services because the gas station is already maintained so that it's not bleeding into the stormwater sewer, um, things of that nature. Don't, I haven't received a letter from the police department or fire department um, on this behalf, but we defer to their comments. I do also want to read, I included in your packet, we did receive a letter from a neighboring property owner. Um, and they, I will read it in for the public hearing. It's from an attorney, um, Ziad Fidel. I represent Adel Jawad Taref, uh, of six-eight-one-seven Kingsley Street, Deerborn, Michigan, of A J T Auto Sales. My client is vehemently opposed to granting a land use exception for an auto repair shop in the B-three general business district at one-four-seven-five Middle Belt. The proposed location would be directly opposite my business and compete with my enterprise. I recall asking this department for a grant of permission to have two bays for the repair of vehicles, which was denied. I also need to expand my business interests at that time, but was refused for reasons I do not understand. For these reasons, I firmly protest granting a deviation from the zoning practice of this honorable counsel.
And this is from who?
Yeah.
This, I believe, so they didn't actually identify their property address. They only identified their home address. I do not, so I can't speak with certainty, but there is a auto um,
Oh.
Shop that's north on Middle Belt, on the other side of the street.
At Hazelwood. Is it at Hazelwood?
No, Cherry Hill. Nah.
It's north of Parkwood. Parkwood. It's north of Parkwood.
Parkwood is that Glenwood or Hazelwood?
I think it's either Hazelwood or Parkwood.
But it's north, it's north of Parkwood.
I know Parkwood is there, but the next street.
It's Hazelwood.
It's Hazelwood, okay.
That's exactly it.
It's on Middle Belt, yeah.
It used to be an old, old gas station even before your time.
So right at the corner of Parkwood and Middle Belt is a vacant lot that Marla Edwards owns.
Yeah.
Right next to that vacant lot is the used car place, right across from Cologne's Barber Shop.
Yeah.
You'll see gr- green AT&T boxes that sit right on the island from it. A little smaller. A little smaller.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Used to be, it used to be a old mom and pop uh, gas station.
Cause as soon as she said that, that's where my mind went. To that particular business.
Like I said, they did not identify their property, their, you know, commercial property interest address. But if I had to guess, and again, I realize this is a little bit of conjecture, that technically is zone B-two. So that is why um, they probably faced issue with expanding their auto repair because there's different requirements for B-two than B-three.
Right.
And this is a B-three's uh, parcel.
Valero, the one that's before us tonight is B-three.
Correct.
The one across the street is B-two.
That's correct.
But it's still special land use for both of them, though, right?
Yes.
Right, but I guess we, 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 we're trying to be clear because we're trying to figure out why he could have possibly been denied because it was in the B-two zone where that is not. Correct me if I'm wrong, where that is not.
That's my, my guess again.
If, even if, even if, if that is actually the building, because right now we're just speculating.
Right.
All right, um, was that everything from the planning department thus far?
Thank you.
Okay, um, is the applicant here with us this evening? Feel free to approach, state your name for the record and feel free to address this body.
Uh, my name is Man Darwish. I'm the architect and the builder, and the applicant at the same time. Uh, it's a pleasure to be here. Just I want to explain.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Could you raise your voice?
Okay. Uh, just I want to explain, right now, we have self-car wash. That car wash, there is a wall screening behind it between residential and uh, commercial. On the right side, there is a trees and landscape. This self-car wash, usually what's happening, there is lots of garbage. People, they come anytime during the night, during the day, they want to do car wash, self-car wash. Some people, they're doing oil change. They're doing like, they, they, they dump their oil inside the drain.
Oh, wow.
And it's in the front, it's, if you're going uh, uh, north from Middle Belt, it's on the right side, it's the first building. Uh, so people, they want to go into gas station. Sometime, they see like, you know, public and cars and they washing their cars using vacuum, they're trying to avoid to go into the business. So uh, and we have on the other side, in the same property, we have automatic car wash.
Right.
So we felt it's a, it's a best for us and better for the public around to do it auto repair. Uh, so we did, I have the drawing, nice, beautiful building. It has, it's gonna be uh, eight parking spot inside the building. So no, it's gonna be no cars gonna be parked outside the building. So it's gonna be clean. And there is no auto sales outside the building or no auto sales at all in that, in that area. Plus, we have more than enough parking lot. Plus, there's not, it's not gonna be any oil change, you know, in that building. It's gonna be repair car, like most of it, uh, electric car repair, a small mechanic. So, and we doing the building nice and clean and match instead like four bay open and it's, it looks ugly. That is gonna be a nice building, uh, a beautiful color and nice landscaping. That's the entire uh, you know, concept.
Okay, thank you. Um, commissioners, do you have any questions or anything right now for the applicant? Commissioner Hall.
That, the car wash, is it operable now? Is not, is it, is it operable now? Like the, did the, does the car wash work?
The automatic?
Yeah, this.
No, the cell phone.
The self-car wash, yes.
It works, okay.
Yeah.
I know the police got a lot of issues with people at night over there.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Exactly, you're right.
Yeah, okay, anybody else?
So the uh, ideal is to get rid of the um, automatic car wash, period.
Uh, automatic car wash, it's on the other side.
That's not yours.
It's ours.
So it's gonna stay?
It's gonna stay. So we have three buildings.
Mm-hmm, we got the Valero gas station.
Valero gas station, self-car wash here.
Right.
And uh, automatic uh, car wash on the other side.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so the repair shop would be?
Would be the first building, the self-car wash. No more self-car wash.
That's what I'm asking you, so you're gonna get rid of the self-car wash? That was my question to you first.
Exactly.
It's two car washes.
He's getting rid of the self-car wash though, I think.
There's a self and an automatic.
He got a self in like four bays or something.
Oh, okay, I remember, I remember. I remember. So you're getting rid of which one? The self one?
The self one, exactly.
Okay, and that's gonna be where the auto repair place is gonna be?
Yes.
Got it. It makes sense now.
There is no oil change, no cars outside, no like broken car outside. Everything is gonna be stored inside the building. Plus, we have all, I put on the system on the drawing, all system for fans and stuff like that, do not, there is no noise, no uh, uh, fume, nothing like that.
Do we know how many auto repair places we have in the city of Inkster?
I don't have that on the, off the top of my head.
I know we have that one right at Cherry Hill in Middle Belt. I know that one, it's fairly new. That's the only one I know of.
I know that one, plus the one we were talking about at Parkwood, just say Parkwood.
That's the auto repair?
Right at that corner?
That's the repair.
Middle Belt of Michigan.
So, oh, Middle Belt of Michigan, also two, so three. Oh, yeah, that is Middle Belt, Michigan, the old gas station. And then I'm trying to think where else.
There's one on Michigan Avenue right before Middle Belt, but they claim they just do their own cars or something. The, right by the battery place on Michigan Avenue, right before Middle Belt.
Yeah.
It's a car place, lot of car fix place like that too.
Oh.
But that's the same one, right?
No, that's a different, that's a tan one, cause it was a gentleman who does all his architecture by hand that came before us.
So you're not talking about Brothers?
No, Brothers there, there's one before Brothers.
It's a car, a car lot though.
It's a car lot, and there's also a repair shop next to it.
Um, so that's three.
So that's three.
Yep, and I'm just trying to think where, oh, four, because in Cherry Hill Plaza.
Oh, it's five then, usually you got one in Eastern Avondale.
Eastern Avondale, yep, that's right.
Inkster, Inkster and Avondale, Inkster and Avondale.
But yeah, then right there in the plaza, that's one on the far end that's closest to the larger one.
What made, what, what made you want to do like a repair shop? What was, what made you want to do that?
Uh, first of all, we have, we have trouble with the self-car wash.
The self-car wash?
Especially the self-car wash next to the gas station. Okay, like some, sometime like you said, during the night, they're like, I don't know, operation, I don't know. Cars behind neighbor, neighbors they don't like. Because the neighbor with the people they work in the gas station, they are friends, they come in, they buy, you know, candy, kids. They think like, oh, during the night was this, during here. And we have another one, we have uh, you know, automatic. So we, you know, two car washes and a gas station in between, it's too much. And uh, we want to do with some, that something to be closed, you know, and to make better business and give opportunity. Like this will be uh, five, five people that are gonna work.
It will be five what?
Five people.
Employees.
Five employees?
You know, you give opportunity to five people, you know, to uh, to give them job. You know, self-car wash, it's, you're not giving job to, to anybody. It's just water and cleaning and always the dumpster, it's full. We have to empty the dumpster, you don't know what they dump, you know? People are coming from other cities and coming, don't they uh?
Did you consider any other um, retail? Did you consider any other retail before that?
Uh, no.
No?
Uh, uh, cause he has also, uh, he owns a gas station also. Yeah, and.
Oh, you own a gas, okay.
It's uh, you know, it's the same business and.
Sure, yeah, yeah, well.
Okay. All right, commissioners, anything further for the applicant? All righty, hearing none, again, this is a public hearing, so the general public has an opportunity to approach the podium and speak to these particular matters, which is a car repair shop at one-four-five, uh, one-four-seven-five Middle Belt Road at the Valero Gas Station. If anyone from the. Ready or not?
I just wanted to ask a question. This used to be a gas station?
It's presently the Valero Gas Station.
Okay.
If you're facing it on the right-hand side, there's four standalone units, which are the self-car wash. Or which is the self-car wash as of right now?
Okay, is there any kind of um, environmental cleanup that has to be done? Because if there is a um, they have to have underground tanks or something of that nature? Oh, the gas station is staying. Okay, they're not removing that.
No.
They're just including an auto body shop with the gas station.
So.
Replacing.
Replacing, cause like, three buildings on one property, you got the automatic, you got the gas station, you have a four unit thing they got over there.
Car wash.
Car wash.
Self-car, self-serve.
So the self-serve car wash is the southern building of that little complex. You got the car wash, then you have the gas station building. And then on the north side of the particular property is the automatic car wash. They own them all. They got all three of those. Which one is being turned into the auto body shop? The self.
The self-car wash.
The south building, the self-car wash right next to the uh, it's actually at the corner.
Okay.
At the corner, yeah.
I think, I think that might be, I think that might be bearing, except, no, that's not.
That's Rosewood.
Rosewood.
Yeah, it's Rosewood. And between Rosewood and Parkwood.
Yeah.
All right. I guess that's it then, thank you.
Okay. And if there is anyone else from the, I'm just trying to pull up a picture, just came up. Anybody else from the general public who wishes to speak to these matters at this time? Feel free to approach the podium and state your name for the record. Yeah, that's it right there.
It's a real nice gas station.
This is, we did it.
Okay, anything else from the planning department?
Nope.
Hearing none, anything else from this body? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Support. It's been property moved and seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes, the public hearing is now closed. We are now down to unfinished business. Case number six A, I'm sorry, item six A, case number two-three-dash-zero-three, site plans. Drive-through restaurant, Big B Coffee, at two-seven-two-zero-six Michigan Avenue. Review and consideration of approval of site plan for a drive-through restaurant for Big B Coffee in the TCD Town Center District at two-seven-two-zero-six Michigan Avenue. A A H M Investments is the applicant.
Thank you. Uh, you all will remember that we heard this case at our June meeting um, and recommended the special land use to city council who then approved it. Um, since then, the city has been working with the owners and applicant to reach an agreement for the use of that alleyway behind um, the building for circulation of the drive-through. There was a consideration of potentially routing cars into the ice arena parking lot. There's been some discussion back and forth, but we have reached a point where we're in the midst of finalizing the maintenance agreement and the agreement with the applicant and the city attorney and Department of Public Services. Um, and have, we're all on a um, happy place and I think we can move forward with the condition that, you know, all the outstanding items are met for the site plan and as long as this agreement is executed. But we've, we've gone through the discussions, we're waiting for the attorney to just sign off on the language of the maintenance agreement and that we can execute it. I didn't want to hold this back another month because I was so close that I think it will be within the next week that we'll be able to finalize that agreement. Um, we also talked with MDOT to make sure that they had no issues with the circulation and put the car stacking in the drive-through, making sure they had enough um, spots essentially so that it's not backing up onto Michigan Avenue. And they uh, sent us an email saying that they believe that as long as we're, they're using that alleyway that that's plenty um, for the amount of car stacking they would require. So MDOT has given their blessing as well. Um, at this point, I think we can. Um, at this point, I think we can move forward with good faith that this is gonna be executed. And it's again, as a condition of the, um, site plan approval.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
So.
Yes, Commissioner Hall and then Commissioner Davis.
So are they coming off of South River?
They're going to loop, so they're gonna pull in off of Michigan Avenue. And then they're going to loop around the back of the building.
Okay.
On South River, and that's how they're gonna get through the drive-through essentially.
So have you guys been to the Tim Hortons, uh?
Aaron's Harryman or Aaron?
Michigan and, uh.
You gotta keep your composure, Commissioner.
Michigan and Telegraph?
Yes.
It's white Russian from a car wash. That's, okay, it's the same, same, same style. You gotta go in, come around, so it's, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, you're talking about deep down in Dearborn?
Yes, the same, same, okay.
You talking about, are you talking about the one, the Tim Hortons on, um, Michigan by Evergrande or the Tim Hortons by Telegraph?
The one by Telegraph.
So that one is where they actually cross the alley and then come back?
No, that is another one before, that's another one. You got another one?
Oh, you're talking about the one between John Daly, no, Gully and.
Correct, that one.
Okay.
That one, yeah, they go in.
Cross some McDonald's?
Go around.
Yeah, yes, yes, yes.
Same, okay.
Is that?
It's similar to same layout.
Are you familiar with the one you're talking about?
Familiar enough to speak to whether it's the same layout, but it's, the layout that they proposed with the, um. Green arrows showing you where they're gonna have the cars stacked in the, the site plans, they would be stacking if there was a lineup. They would be stacked in that South River, uh, drive, which is why we need that agreement with the city, um, to utilize that.
Um, Commissioner Hall, are you?
Is that, is that, was that in our packet?
Yeah.
I don't see it.
Once you get a chance, can you just let them know what page?
Right after the review, um, it's twenty if you're in the.
Twenty if you're in the PDF?
Yep, there's a, a diagram showing where that circulation and each rectangle is essentially the distance of the cars.
Let's realize I'm missing my bar. That's bar.
Yeah, there's a couple of different ones that show it.
Cuz it's usually a thing where I could type my page every day.
Also vote.
Go right ahead, I'm sorry, Commissioner, uh, uh, Davis. Jane or Miss Dixon?
Miss Dixon. So, um. I just wanna be clear that this is, cuz we tabled this, right? And now you're just giving us an update of what has transpired since us tabling it.
Here it is.
So we're not approving anything, we're just kinda, are, are we gonna approve this tonight now that you've given us this update? So we are gonna be voting tonight.
If you so choose, I mean, you could choose to table it, I'm presenting with the information that we had some outstanding. You know, we weren't sure how we were going to route.
I remember now, okay.
Traffic at that point, and now that we've come to an agreement between the city and the owner.
Okay, no, 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 so they're gonna actually stay in the parking lot.
It's feel confident to being able to say you could approve it with the condition that that agreement is executed.
Okay, so, um. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't print that, okay, okay, I'm clear. So that's not the, that's not South River and that's the alley, right?
This is the alleyway right here, so here's where the cars coming off of Michigan Avenue.
Right.
They go this way, and then the alleyway is here, where they turn left to come around the building there. But if it's, they can stack up in the parking lot.
Right, so they're not gonna actually go to South River Drive, they're just going to. They're, they're, there's gonna be per, they're gonna be, uh, parallel to South River Drive, correct? According to what we're looking at here, we're looking at the same thing, exactly.
It's that alleyway south of South River Drive.
Okay, so, so that, the, that's, that's some, that's, that's public alley.
Yes.
But the ov- the ma- vast majority of the overflow is gonna actually be in what we're co- we're gonna call the parking lot. Or lot, in, on, that the lot is actually facing Michigan, is, is on Michigan Avenue, correct?
So that property is on Michigan Avenue, they've got, you're gonna pull in off of Michigan Avenue to enter the Big B. You're, you're gonna have parking, just like how the bar is, you know, but it'll be paved and formalized.
Right, right.
And then to circulate, to go around to the drive-through, you're gonna pull into that alley.
The alley, not South River Drive, right?
Pull around the back of that building.
Okay.
And then come through on the west side of the building to pull through the drive-through window.
Right, so it's, but it's not South River Drive.
The alleyway.
Alright, okay. So that's a nice space.
Yeah, absolutely. And based off the squares here, I think these are cars, car lengths, so you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. At least just in the holding area before you get to the parking lot, or ten from the driveway.
Right, right, till you get to the drive, to, to the, to the alley, that's, that's what I, cuz that, that wasn't making sense to me cuz of skating rink, is, um, the old skating rink.
Last meeting we were discussing, they were, they had mentioned something about outside, outdoor seating, is that still?
They have not submitted any revised plans that have included outdoor seating, I, my understanding is they still.
Look like the, that's me right there.
Maybe utilize, um, some of that sidewalk area for outdoors.
Hold on one second, I can't hear.
Can't hear.
What'd you say, I'm sorry?
They haven't formalized outdoor seating on the site, uh, my understanding is they still have interest in placing some, um. Outdoor dining tables in that sidewalk area, uh, in the front of the entrance. That's not, I mean, if it was a public sidewalk, we wouldn't require that they show us their outdoor dining on the plan either. But they haven't changed anything about the site to accommodate a larger outdoor dining area.
Okay, and, and also it seemed like last time there was something going on with engineering?
That was about the circulation, um, cuz they were concerned about the maintenance of the alleyway. And that's where we had to have that, we had a couple of conversations back and forth with the applicant about. What's the best way to utilize the alleyway, are you, are we willing to agree to a maintenance agreement? That if anything is to happen while there are cars stacked in that alleyway, that the business is liable instead of the city. Um, those were the engineering concerns that we wanted to work out before we gave formal approval. And that's where that agreement that they're, you know, getting stamped out with the attorney was, is gonna speak to all of that. So I've talked, I've had conversations with, um, Mr. Bivens and Ms. Smalley, who's the city's engineer. And both have, are happy with the agreement that we've m- made, we just haven't been able to formalize it.
The island.
You haven't been able to formalize it.
But that's, uh, part of getting the attorney to make sure that he has given his blessing. It's, uh, bureaucratic, I guess, holdup rather than a substantial holdup.
Okay.
And you all set?
Yes, sir.
Miss Dixon, real quick, on the, uh, one with the green arrows that you're talking about. Those emblems that are circular, and you'll see them on the green islands in the parking lot? And you'll see them also circular items that are on the island. What are those?
Those are trees.
Those are trees.
Yeah, so they're, um, part of the required landscape, parking land, parking lot landscaping. And then, you know, the street-side landscaping as well.
Gotcha, so those are trees and then the other ones are shrubs.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm getting ready to say, I don't think those are trees, but when you say shrubs, I'm like, I thought those were trees.
The larger circles.
The larger circles are the trees.
Okay.
And then the smaller circles are the shrubs.
The smaller green.
Circles are the shrubs, okay.
Okay.
We thought they were tables. Yeah, that's what we thought they were tables.
When I looked at how close they were to traffic, I.
I'm thinking like, I wouldn't wanna be that close to it.
Yeah, nah.
And those trees are always, um, the city requires them as part of the ordinance. Sometimes, uh, just for your all information, when, you know, you approve a site plan and then you go by and you don't see the sh- the street trees planted. A lot of times that's because Wayne County, um, actually denies the permit to work in the, the right-of-way.
Right.
So the applicant, we require it and we hope that we, they can plant them, but typically, it's never the applicant that, you know. Doesn't plant them, they go and try and Wayne County steps in and says, we aren't gonna let you to do, do any work in the, the right-of-way, which.
Interesting.
Hoping to get, uh, Wayne County to be a little bit more, um, willing, but you know, that's.
Cooperation?
Yes, a work in progress.
Humor me, what would be the reason they would deny that?
Um, so they've stated that it's excess maintenance for them, so if something happens with the tree or during the storm. If you have trees that close to the road, then they have to take care of that, if there's limbs or trees that go down into the street. There's also a lot of their, their public infrastructure, so, um, gas lines, water lines, sanitary sewer, storm sewer. Is all, not necessarily all the way in that right-of-way, but a lot of it is encroaching in that right-of-way. And so planting trees, they say, is also gonna cause them more long-term maintenance and their infrastructure costs. Um, so those are their, their big points that they've listed to me when I, cuz I've gotten on the phone with them and I've said, well. No, we approve this, this is part of our requirement, we had, they were gonna plant the trees and they said, no, they're not. And they trump, uh, my say, so.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Also on the site plans, ladies and gentlemen, um, I had it zoomed out cuz we had zoomed in on one. There's one color portion of the site plan that actually shows you the entire flow of traffic in addition to the arrows on there. It's in the bottom left-hand corner, if you're on one of those pages, you start scrolling down. So you can actually see which direction a car will come in off Michigan Avenue, turn into the lot, and be following the path.
Come to the red line.
Yeah.
And that's the east, uh, coming in and going, east, coming in, east and going out west.
Right. Um, also, like Miss Dixon was saying, I don't know if you all ever encountered this or not, but. City of Inkster, we don't have really a tree trimming crew, we just have contractors that get to it. As, as you may or may not know, we've had a lot of complaints, and then we stand around, we wait on D T to come tran- trim those ones that are near the power lines. But like, my, uh, a friend of mine works in Dearborn, and he's a part of their tree trimming crew. So every time those storms come through or things of that nature, their crews can get out there and clean up immediately. Um, I have driven down Michigan Avenue before where there's. Foiled, so let's put it that way, along Michigan Avenue, and it's literally in the lane after a storm. And there's nothing you can do but either stop and wait till traffic clears and go around it, or, um, hopefully, you know, there'll be someone to pick it up. But they have that capacity, whereas we don't, and I guess Wayne County's saying, we're not taking that task up at all. Cuz we already have our own little things we gotta maintain, so I understand that when they trump it. And a lot of times when, um, Commissioner Davis is here as well in the past, he would speak to the infrastructure that goes under those islands. And it has happened on Morley Street before where there's a tree in the custom, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of. Customer, uh, constituent or residence front yard. That D P S had to dig up to fix the water main break, the whole street was ice until they could get down there to shut the water off and all of that. So I understand that part, but I'm glad you brought that to our attention, cuz I didn't know either, I just know we have a bond. With them, or they have a bond with us, surety bond, and if they don't plant them, then, and don't maintain them, then that's what that money goes into to do, so. Alrighty, um. There was something else I was going to ask about that, oh, so, I'm glad you said that. So that was the underlying issue with Department of Public Works was just really that who's gonna maintain this alleyway?
Yes.
Okay.
And, um, and making sure that was the liability, you know, we're not liable if you're stacking cars in the alleyway.
Right.
To anything that happens at that point.
Okay, yeah, cuz I know, i- and even in a neighboring city, if you go to the city of Wayne. Um, one of the city parking lots is dilapidated, if someone asks, why doesn't the business approve this, but it's not the business parking lot, it's the city's. And, cuz they have some type of agreement with them, the businesses can park there, but they don't maintain the lot, the city does. And if the city doesn't maintain it, it's just gonna turn to gravel pretty soon. Alrighty, um. I'm sorry, we are not at the public hearing anymore.
I know that, but we don't, we don't have your access, we don't understand the traffic flow.
You wanna see an image of it?
If you have it available, I'm just trying to figure out where it is because people are gonna ask.
Yes, that's what we, that's what we were discussing.
I, you have to be able to understand what you guys are talking about.
I guess we could have put it up on the projector. Yeah, so I go, do this one connect? I don't think so.
She got a packet.
Well, a lot of times when the packets come, it's just, they get the two pages for the agenda, they don't get the actual packet itself.
I mean, but Jane just gave.
Oh, okay, cool.
We moving along?
Yeah, so, um, and I'm sorry, we technically were not in discussion.
We do have public comment later in the agenda.
Yeah, right, but I'm, no, I'm talking about because we started talking about it when you spoke, but we didn't get to any motions and start discussing. We just started discussing, that's all. Um. Okay, what was it from us? Anything additional from planning?
That is all.
Okay. Let me get back to my agenda. Alright, so, we're back under unfinished business, item six A, and that was the site plans for the drive-through restaurant at Big B Coffee. Of course, this is un- again, this is unfinished business, so we do have to take action on this, or unless we table it or something like that. So the floor is open for a motion. To approve or deny the site plans.
I make motion to approve the site plan for the Big B, case number twenty-three oh three.
We have to approve to. Approve to, um, be considered to counsel, we're not approving it.
No, we're approving this site plan.
So, oh, right.
We already did the special eyes.
Exactly, I'm sorry.
No worries.
Approval of the site plan.
Is there support?
You just, uh, matter of procedure, just, um, add that with the conditions listed in the planner review letter.
With the conditions.
Alrighty.
Let's sit in a planner's review, yes.
Is there support? Support, it's been property moved and supported. And again, the motion is to approve the site plans with.
Planner's review.
With the planner's review from the letter. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to item six B, special land use. Case number two three dash zero eight, mixed-use business and residential at seven one five Inkster Row. Review and consideration of recommendation for a special land use request for a mixed-use business and residential in the B two. Thoroughfare mixed-use district at seven one five Inkster Row. I match path to residency is the applicant. This is unfinished business, Miss Dixon, go ahead and refresh our memories, please.
Yes, thank you, um, this case was heard at the July meeting. This is the, um, Dr. Dr. Rahal who plans to partner and bring, uh, medical resident students. And to live on-site while they work with his clinic and other facilities in the area for one to two months at a time. Um, they would provide the transportation service for necessary trips to the grocery store, to the clinic where they would be working. Um, and the building is already set up with kind of rooming-type boarding house. Where there's shared kitchen facilities and then there's an educational kind of area in the basement. Um, I have been in contact with, uh, Dr. Rahal, he has had multiple meetings with the school, um, principal. And they've been very successful, but they have not been able to, um, get any contact in, from the corporate office. Include, the school principal herself also was unable to even get contact from her corporate entity. She did provide him, um, a statement saying that she was, you know, informally was able to support it from an operations perspective. Sharing the parking spaces to the, uh, east of the building, kind of in the back of that building. And that she would be working with her corporate entity to get a formalized agreement. He, about five minutes before the beginning of this meeting, didn't wanna risk that, uh, so he sent me a drawing of a. Uh, he hasn't been able to formalize, but of what he would do in the front yard with the parking. So at this point, um, with, I'm hopeful that he would be able to get the corporate entity to sign off on that agreement. But because he has also offered his, uh, preliminary sketches for the site plan. Which would come before this body for that parking approval. Um, I put a condition in here that the recommendation to approve to city council. With the contingent agreement that the shared parking agreement be formalized with the corporate entity of the Inkster Preparatory Academy. Or if no agreement is able to be reached, the applicant will build out the option of the parking in the front yard of the parcel with site plan approval. Um, so, this is, I don't wanna necessarily hold this up because we can't get ahold of the corporate entity. Because we can't get a hold of the corporate entity and I know Dr. Rahal also doesn't want to do that. And so he has, you know generously. Kind of started the motion to create the. Parking on the front yard as well, um which either I, I mean, both are. By ordinance acceptable options.
Thank you. And if I'm not mistaken, the last time we took these matters up before we tabled it. His closing and purchase of that property was contingent upon what the city of Inkster did.
That's correct.
So he couldn't even move forward, he's, okay, that I just wanted to make sure and that's, you know. I don't understand with the school, what happened, because again, the last entity that was there, they s- uh, the school sent their attorneys to us.
So I know Dr. Rahal also reached out to the attorneys who previously represented the school um at that case.
Okay.
I don't know exactly what their relationship is now, but they did not have any comment to provide, so. Um, he has been working very hard to try and. Reach someone um at the school beyond. The physical principal at the school who, again, she's, they've had multiple meetings and is supportive of it, but can't. Offer that formal legal agreement um without the corporate.
Understandable. And again, as long as uh the the parking is the issue. Is either he gets a shared parking agreement from their top officials, or he has to put a brand new one in per our rec- per our recommendation, so. Okay. And this is under unfinished business. Okay, commissioners, so. Any questions for the planning department?
No, we were just looking at um. The um, the actual building. In the front of it, so if he has to build out. That's gonna be where the trees and stuff is at, right?
Which is why I was really hopeful and encouraging.
That he does not.
Correct.
Cause that's gonna be a lot of work.
Well, it's a lot of work and the the trees are really nice and it adds a lot to the the streetscape and also the physical side of the building and. Um, you know, I. I think the city would prefer and from a planning perspective, best practice would be utilize all of this extra parking that you have that's not being utilized. Especially when you're going to need so few parking spots for these medical residents who are not typically going to be driving themselves.
So the only thing that's slowing this up is the fact that you can't reach the person.
Correct. Uh, the school principal like who's, you know, running things on site has agreed to it, but cannot provide that formal.
Has to come from corporate.
It has to come from the corporate entity.
And the person on site has said yes.
Yes, and but she has also reached out to her corporate entity and they haven't responded to her either, so. Truly, the applicant has, I believe, been making a very good faith effort to try and. Reach everyone, you know, necessary, um. And I would hope would be able to finally get that formalized with the corporate entity, maybe now that school's back in session and they're maybe in the office more. Frequently.
How much time, excuse me for calling, how much time are we allotting for that to happen?
Shoot, he start parking there, there.
No, I'm saying, we we have a contingency for them building us a parking lot in case they can't. So how long are we giving them before they go into that construction?
Well, I know he's eager to get the building, you you know, underused, so I, I think he's kind of opting from my conversation with him. He's gonna opt to build out the parking lot if he can't get the agreement within the next couple of weeks. Um, I don't have a a timeline, you know, the contingency would be he wouldn't be able to occupy without. The agreement or the built out parking lot. And if he chose to move forward with the built out parking lot. That would be at his discretion in terms of the timeframe. If you all wanna add a certain timeframe in stipulation to that. That would be at your discretion as well. Either way, I, he has shown that he's going to make sure that the building is going to be occupied very quickly. Does that answer your question?
It it answered my question, yes. Um, I was uh. Is there any way that we can maybe even ask him if he does do that and if he just, that he could maybe plant some trees elsewhere?
There would be part, so the site's currently in compliance with the landscaping standards because all of those trees exist. When you install a parking lot, you have parking lot landscaping requirements, and then he would have to replace those trees. Because that's, would need to bring the site into compliance. Um, you would need to plant. To replace whatever trees you're taking down. So that would be part of the site plan approval requirements. And again, he would have to go through the site plan approval process before he could construct the parking lot.
Okay, thank you.
Is it possible we can actually give him more time to not feel rushed into doing that, so. As to give him, because I would, I mean, not I. It would be preferable that he did not have to do that, keep everything it is it is, because we got all this parking over here that's not being utilized, so you know. Instead of, cuz I think you said he, a couple of weeks, is it?
That that was his um, his desire he shared with me was. When he, once he purchases this building, he really wants to hit the ground running, so if he can't get. To who he needs to get to at the school's corporate entity, then he's, you know. Very much ready to shift just so that he's not held up by um, these kind of legal frameworks. And unfortunately, the city doesn't have the ability to, you know, waive. You're still gonna have to have parking and because he hasn't, he doesn't even have a single spot. Um, it's, it's not like we can waive a parking. To from seventeen spots to five, it's, you don't have any parking.
You don't have any parking.
And I, I guess my thought was, excuse me for. But I I I I like to err on the side of closing doors, so we can make sure that we put something. To rest and it's not just something dangling out there that's. Unfinished and if he's not getting to the parking lot or whatever and it's not coming into compliance. Then that, who's gonna monitor that?
Well, he wouldn't be able to operate without coming into compliance. He, that parking lot would have to be built.
Okay.
Before he would be able to get a certificate of occupancy.
Okay, very good.
The timing with the weather probably is playing a role as well in terms of his consideration of. If I can't get a hold of these, this, you know, corporation, then I'm gonna need to pour my cement, get everything worked out. Pretty quickly here.
So the certificate of occupancy is gonna be eh egging him to get.
Correct.
Bring it to closure, that's good. Okay, very good, thank you.
Anything else, commissioners? Alrighty, a question for you, when. If he has to build that parking lot in the front, doesn't he have to tie in the Wayne County for the sewage and all of that as well?
The um, I don't, it depends on how, so. My understanding, you're, I think you're referencing the stormwater facility, okay. It depends on how much permeable surface he puts in on the site. So over a certain threshold. Um, this site's less than an acre and this engineer would be able to speak to it off the top of her head, but. Over a certain percentage of permeable surface that they're altering, you then have to go to Wayne County. To enter into a mutual uh stormwater agreement. Now, if it's. Small enough that you're under that, then you enter into Wayne, you apply to Wayne County for a waiver and they grant you a waiver and say you're. Below our threshold, you haven't met that, here's the waiver. Now, that's all part of the final site plan approval process. We make sure that Wayne County has either given us that waiver or signed off on the agreement for the stormwater management facility. Um, but without, I know he sent me a drawing, I don't wanna speak to, that's gonna be the. Thing that he submits, cuz it's not the formal submission, without knowing exactly how big the parking lot he would be proposing. I I'm not sure exactly what the requirements Wayne County would have.
Alrighty, thank you. Alrighty, commissioners, again, we're at item six B. Under unfinished business, case number two, three dash zero eight, special land use. The floor is open for a motion to recommend or deny to city council with the conditions listed by the planning department.
I move to recommend approval of the proposed special land use for mixed use business and residential building at. Seven, one, five, Inkster Road, contingent on the following recommendations made by um. The city planner.
Is there support?
Support.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to new business. Item seven A, case number two, three dash zero nine, special land use auto car lot at two, six, three, zero, zero Michigan Avenue. Again, this is the review and consideration of recommendation of approval of a special land use request for second. Excuse me, for secondhand auto sales in the B three thoroughfare mixed use. District at two, six, three, zero, zero Michigan Avenue. Ali Said is the applicant. What's your pleasure?
What are we trying to see about?
This is the one with the.
This is the one that we spoke of earlier with the potential moratorium that's in place. Um, I did reach out to the city attorney for any clarity that he could potentially provide, but I didn't get an answer. Um, uh, the documents I was able to find, I did forward them to the planning department since we've been here. I however, don't know if there was anything additional after those items were voted on and or expired.
Can we table it?
Yes.
Well, this was, this was the one you're saying with the car lots?
Yes.
It's already a car lot.
Right.
Right, but we don't, we're not sure about the moratorium.
Not sure what the moratorium speaks to at full.
Okay. We just wanna make sure what that, what the moratorium speaks to. So we probably wanna table it. Go ahead, Tony.
Is there a specific date?
Oh, yeah, and so what's, what's the date of the next meeting?
Let's see. So we're at the end of August, we would be looking at. September eleventh or September twenty fifth.
So we get tabled for a month. So September twenty fifth?
That's, it's your pleasure.
But that's, those are the next two dates for our commission meeting.
Right, the second and fourth Mondays of.
Well, not actua- well.
Twenty fifth, right? Twenty fifth is the date?
Yep, that's the fourth Monday of the month.
Um, so I need to do a.
Make a motion?
Uh, I make a motion that we table um this until September twenty four. Fifth, September twenty fifth, twenty twenty three.
Support.
It's been properly moved and supported. Is there further discussion before we table these matters? And again, this is to give time for the city attorney to respond and do a full review of the moratorium, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, there's no further discussion. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes, the special land use is tabled until September twenty fifth, two thousand twenty three. And of course, the city attorney does have my voicemail, but would just ask that the planning department. Reiterate and follow up with the attorney as well. We're down to new business, item seven B, case number two, three dash one zero, site plan for the auto car lot at two, six, three, zero, zero Michigan Avenue. Review and consideration of approval of a site plan for secondhand auto sales in the B three thoroughfare. Mixed use district at two, six, three, zero, zero Michigan Avenue. Ali Said is the applicant. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Two, six, three, zero, zero Michigan Avenue.
Yes.
Now, this is the one next to the ca- the Cajun, the the chocolate.
Nope, this is the same item as before. One is a special land use, one is a site plan. So commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Move to table this until September twenty fifth, until we get um more clarification on the moratorium.
Alrighty, is there support?
Support.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes, site plans are now tabled until September twenty fifth, two thousand twenty three. We are down to item number seven C, case number two, three dash eleven, special land use. Auto repair shop at one, four, seven, five Middlebelt. Review and consideration of recommendation of approval for a special land use request for an auto repair shop at one, four, seven, five Middlebelt. In the B three thoroughfare mixed use district. I'm not going to butcher the name. Um, we did hear from the applicants earlier. So this is a special uh land use. Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
I'm making a motion to pass.
To approve. Recommend approval, I'm sorry.
To recommend the approval. For uh auto repair shop at uh one, four, seven, five Middlebelt.
Is there support?
Yeah, a motion or second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to item seven D, case number two, three dash one two, site plan. Auto repair shop at one, four, seven, five Middlebelt. Review and consideration of approval for a site plan for an auto repair shop at one, four, seven, five Middlebelt in the B three. Thoroughfare mixed use district. Commissioners, what is your pleasure? And again, this is a site plan, so this is just approved right here at our level.
Um, motion to approve the site plan for auto repair shop at one, four, seven, five Middlebelt.
Support, second, second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to item eight miscellaneous. Commissioners, do you have anything for miscellaneous at this time? Hearing none. Planning department, do you have anything for miscellaneous for this body? Thank you. Uh, moving right along to item number nine. And this is the second hearing of the public for items that were not scheduled for a public hearing or on the agenda. So anyone from the general public who wishes to um address this body at this time, please approach the podium and state your name for the record. Hearing and seeing no movement, um, I just have one quick question because I know when we were looking at the renderings that. Ms Watley was asking about, cuz she didn't have it right then and there and was wondering the map we were looking at. Ms Watley, are you clear on the flow of the traffic for the drive through? No? Okay. Okay, let's uh get that rectified real quick. I'm gonna show you on my laptop. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, what did I just click? Oh, I know I did. So.
But I see, see the arrows, but there's, I'm looking at Michigan Avenue, so I'm assuming you're coming in this way. And traveling around through the alley and coming back, but then it doesn't show an egress.
Right, right here. So see the lines for the flow of traffic from Michigan Avenue and then back on the Michigan Avenue? So that's the way the flow of traffic, I don't know, i- it's multiple different images. That might not be the exact same one right here, but that's in this packet as well. But this just gives a better idea right here, cuz this is a car on Michigan Avenue right here, and it would drive in a lot that way.
Yeah, well, those lines, the way you have them on this.
Yeah, that's just a different image of it, that's all. So this, it's the same thing, it's just a different view, cuz it, but this is, it will go be, this is the alleyway here. And then it will come back down between the uh building itself that's established right there now. And then there's another building over there, but those cars will come between there, go back to front of it and out on the Michigan Avenue. It's cuz I touched the screen.
What, what, where is the ice arena in all of this?
Right here.
Oh, okay, okay, alright. So it's behind the alley.
Yeah, cuz it's across the alley. Yeah, cuz it's across the alleyway.
So as long as I walked all this way, can I uh?
Yes, this is public comment.
Can I make a public comment?
Yes.
So at the last meeting, I was in a lather about uh seven, um, three fifteen. The flower bowl.
Flower bowl two.
Yeah, the flower bowl two, and some things that were read to us was not exact. So um, I brought it up at the council meeting and I said, the only thing that we should be concerned with is that he is in violation of an ordinance. So the attorney is now looking into that, so I wanted to make you all aware. That there's some things he's looking at because of the process that this went through that wasn't exactly correct. And we are the only two bodies that can.
And we are the only two bodies that can. You know, correct things of that nature, either the council or planning. So I wanted you to know there's more, there uh the attorney is looking at some things. And he's supposed to send us information regarding.
Thank you. Have you gotten any response back from the clerk's office? Has the planning department at this time gotten any response back from the clerk's office or the city attorney's office?
I have, uh and I have an email to formalize to everyone after today, I just did not have a chance to put it together prior to this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, um if there's nothing else from this body. The floor is open for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, I thought everybody wanted to spend the night. It's been properly moved, it's seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes, the time is eight thirty-one PM, this meeting is now adjourned.